Second.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda, PJ. Are you ready to?
We've got to go through that.
Oh, approval of our agenda, the consent calendar? I thought you got up in here and read that one. Oh, after I approved the agenda. Any questions about the agenda today? We have items three through, there are a lot of them today, twenty-six. Any questions, comments about the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. All right, I skipped a step. Thank you for keeping me on track.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner recommendations to the Pendleton County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item three, conditional use permit review oh-one-oh-one for Ursula Brackett to review a mobile home park in suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit oh-one-oh-one with nineteen conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review twelve-twenty-two for Stephen Dorothy Wilkinson to review multiple RV sites to be used in the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit twelve-twenty-two with fourteen conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review fifteen-twenty-five from Rushmore Shadows LLC to review a recreational resort with the addition of forty-five RV sites in the subject property in the highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit fifteen-twenty-five with seventeen conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review sixteen-oh-five for Spring Creek Hideaway LLC to review a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit sixteen-oh-five with sixteen conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review sixteen-twenty-five for Alvin and Sharon Gullickson to review a vacation home rental in the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit sixteen-twenty-five with fifteen conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review sixteen-thirty-one for Black Hills Raptor Center. Maggie Angler is the agent to review a bird education and health facility on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit sixteen-thirty-one with fourteen conditions. Item nine, construction permit review fifteen-eighteen for Dennis Zanstra Real Estate Holdings to review placing Phil in an area south of the project area on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit fifteen-eighteen with six conditions. Item ten, construction permit review sixteen-eleven for Tally Construction to review a stockpile rock site for the future, for future use. Staff recommends to end construction permit sixteen-eleven with the applicant's concurrence. Item eleven, construction permit seventeen-ten, Site Work Specialist Incorporated to strip, excavate, and stockpile material for off-site use for South Valley Drive property. Staff recommends approval of the construction permit seventeen-ten with ten conditions. Item twelve, vacation easement seventeen-oh-four for Dana Rogers to vacate an existing sixty-six foot wide access easement and to add a forty-foot wide private access easement. Staff recommends approval of vacation easement seventeen-oh-four with three conditions. Item thirteen, major plan unit development amendment fifteen-oh-four for Voorhees Hospitality. Chuck Voorhees is the agent to review an existing plan unit development to add five new cabins, a new residence, a new garage, a low-water bridge, and central pavilion on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the extension of major plan unit development amendment fifteen-oh-four with twenty-five conditions. Item fourteen, minor plat seventeen-thirty-two and subdivision regulation variance seventeen-eleven for Tom and Stephanie Hill to create lots A and B of Lot One of Betcher Subdivision and to waive plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance seventeen-eleven and approval of minor plat seventeen-thirty-two with ten conditions. Item fifteen, minor plat seventeen-thirty-four for Chase and Lonnie Phillips, D.C. Scott Survey is the agent, to combine three lots to create lots one and two of Wicksville Edition. Staff recommends approval of minor plat seventeen-thirty-four with twelve conditions. Item sixteen, plan unit development oh-eight-oh-one to review a plan unit development to allow three existing mobile homes and home occupation and outbuildings. Staff recommends approval of the extension of plan unit development oh-eight-oh-one with nine conditions.
PJ, would staff like to pull any items off?
Item fifteen, please.
Fifteen. Board, would anyone else like to pull any items off the consent calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull number six just for the purpose of clarification and discussion of one of the conditions.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, number five.
Number five. Any other member of the commission want to pull? Any members of the audience want to pull any item off of the consent calendar to address independently? Seeing no one interested in that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as items three through four, seven, nine through fourteen, and sixteen. Is that correct? All right, I'd entertain a motion for that.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Take us item number five, please.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Did you have a specific question on item five?
I did. Do I understand this right, where they had like sixteen, they had like sixteen cabins approved and it went up to like thirty or something like that when you guys showed up?
That is correct. The actual applicant is in the audience. I believe there was some confusion as to whether park models needed building permits, whether they were considered.
Okay, that was my question, is how do we go from sixteen to thirty and go through a building permit process and not catch some of that along the way, so?
Right, it was, I think there was confusion, and when I met with the applicant's agents, that was the confusion about the park models.
So do park models need building permits?
Yes, they do.
So then have all of the non-permitted cabins, have they been permitted now?
Not now, they will be. It is a condition that they do have to get that done within a certain timeframe. I think it's thirty days.
Okay.
So I will work with them to get that done as far as it, and that's why they're, we'll have a, if it doesn't get done, we'll bring it up for review. But I've been, I've met with the applicants, I believe that they'll be.
Does staff have any concerns after being out there and going through this process that everything will be resolved accordingly?
No, not at all.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Any questions, anybody from the audience like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve to extend conditional use permit CU fifteen dash twenty-five with the seventeen conditions.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second, all in favor, or further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item number six.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Did you have a specific question on item six?
I did, and it's on, it's regarding condition number two for the phone, to ensure phone service.
Yes.
I just never noticed a condition in these other vacation home, you know, conditional use permits that we've been dealing with that required or addressed even, phone connectivity.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just wondering, is that standard? Did I, have I just missed it in some of the others, or is there something unique about this?
Sure. It's a pretty inconsistent condition, honestly. We've added it into a few of them that have been like further out in the hills where cell phone service isn't great. We've added a condition that they have to have a landline for emergency purposes. That's what this one used to say, is that there was a landline. They have since installed this cellphone booster. Without a landline or a cellphone booster, there is still cellphone coverage out there, but it's kind of spotty, not great cellphone coverage. So that's why we just included the condition that they continue to have a cellphone booster in lieu of a landline. I know it was kind of a difficult process for them to get a landline out there before because no one else out there has a landline. So it's kind of a tough process for them, that's why they went with this cellphone booster. So just to ensure that there is really good cellphone service out there so that they can make emergency calls if need be, we put the condition that it stay a cellphone booster.
And just to add to that, it was a recommendation of, because it was a concern from the planning commission when this was first heard.
Uh-huh, I see. So just following on from that, as a general practice then, when you review the vacation home rental permits, do you, I mean, is it kind of on your checklist to assess whether there's adequate phone coverage? Or is it, is it, is it just, since this was there at the beginning, it's, just stays? I mean, or is it part of your general review now?
Um, you know, I, I know me personally, when I go out and look at vacation home rentals, I make sure that there is adequate cellphone service to some extent. And I know a lot of them, the older ones, do have like that landline condition in there. So when we review them, it's something that we ensure that they have as a landline if it's actually a condition in there. And this one, I've been out to a couple of times. Like I said, their cellphone service is out there, but it's kind of spotty, so.
Oh, no, I know, I'm sure, yeah, okay. It just strikes me as that it's a very sensible thing to look at and kind of assess on all vacation home rentals, considering how, how we know, we understand cellphone in the Black Hills is, you know, somewhat iffy, so. All right, well, thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
All right, any other, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I don't have my ordinance book in front of me, but is that a requirement of the ordinance for phone service?
I don't have mine in front of me either.
I just don't remember. I was trying to remember if that's where it came from.
While they're looking that up, Commissioner, if you recall, this is the property that had the flood plain and floodway around it, which actually spurred the new addition to the vacation home rentals that they be exempt in flood, that they be not allowed in floodway. That was the discussion on this, plus with the phone because of ingress and egress around that.
I see, because of the flooding situation?
Yeah.
Potential flooding situation.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't remember.
While you're looking that up, is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item from the, from the public? Come on up.
I don't think so.
Joyce Shagru. I was going to ask that this be pulled from the consent agenda as well for a different reason, but just to give you more information, Commissioner Johnson, the, this vacation home rental was, corner of it, in the flood plain, as I recall. And in, getting in and out was an issue, and if there was no communication and there was a flood on that creek, it would have been a problem, and so that's why that was recommended, so I'll confirm that. For those of you who remember, the old ordinance, we have two ordinances in place, the old ordinance and the new ordinance that took effect in January. So we have vacation home rentals like this one that were approved under the old ordinance. Now we have a new ordinance in place, which requires one acre. And with the one, density was the problem, and with one acre, we felt that that alleviated some of the problem of density. So the original policy, as I understood it, was that those VHRs that were approved under the old ordinance would remain under the old ordinance unless they complied with all requirements of the new ordinance, which meant one acre, then they could have more guests during the day. So I've been watching that as we move through the process since January. And I may be remiss because I haven't been at every meeting, but I believe this is the first one where it's less than one acre and the staff is proposing that they be allowed to have the number of guests during the day that under the, that are under the new ordinance. So this VHR would have part of their conditions or requirements under the old ordinance and part under the new. That's confusing, and I had just a very quick conversation with PJ, as some of you may have noticed, before the meeting. And I asked him, okay, is there a certain point where a density, you're not going to do this because density will be too intense? Now you'll notice that this one is point nine-seven acres, so it's almost one, but not quite. And his response to me, and PJ can, can correct me if I'm wrong, is that that decision hasn't been made yet because it hasn't come up, okay? We're dealing with ordinances here and policy, and that's pretty ambiguous. You don't, at least in, from my experience, you don't make your policy step by step by step, you know, start at one point and then, okay, is point seven-five okay? Is point three okay? You don't do it on the fly. So I understand that there's a problem in trying to apply to ordinances, and we recognize that at the beginning. Seems to me there should be some definitive discussion about, okay, when is density a problem or when is it not? Is it okay at point nine, point seven to allow, it actually doubles the number of people that can be on that property from the old ordinance to the two? So is it okay at point nine-seven? Is it okay at point seven-five? Is it okay at point three? Then we've just, to me, destroyed the whole idea that density is a problem. So I don't know what to do with this one today. If we follow the old policy, this one would not be approved. But they've changed, apparently changed their policy, and now this is approvable. And I wasn't aware of that, and, and there may have been internal discussion, and maybe it was before you, but I didn't pick up on it in any, anything that I watched or any meeting that I attended. So to me, today, this one should not be approved until there's further discussion, or it, that condition should not be approved. I'm not saying the VHR itself shouldn't be, but that condition to double the number of allowable people on that property should not be approved until there's a definitive policy that's presented to the public. So we know what you all are thinking.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience like to speak on this item? PJ, would you like to address any of those items that were brought up?
Sure. Especially because I'm reading the VHR here, so I've got, I may have some questions. Yep, no problem. Just one point of clarification, the, the amount of people only increased by five from fifteen to twenty daytime occupancy. It didn't double. And during the two years of Vacation Home Rental Committee, this topic hadn't come up as a discussion. No one had complained about it or brought it up as a concern until now. It's definitely something we can look into, and the planning commission is free to change the conditions however they feel.
Anyone have any questions for?
Mr. Chair, isn't this a, a continue, or an extension? This isn't something where the property got sold and now they have to come in for another CUP, which would indicate then they're falling back? This is a?
Change.
An extension, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So the fact that they're three hundredths of an acre under is the way it is with extensions from my perspective, is that?
You are correct. But it's continuing on.
I have no further questions.
Any further questions for, for anybody else? Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a, and Cassie, are you gonna?
Oh, just to answer Lori's question, it is not in our ordinance about phones.
Oh, that's right. We just talked, we just talked about the phones, phone service.
All right. There's no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of, let's see, move approval of, of conditional use permit extension on CU sixteen dash zero-five with the, with the sixteen conditions recommended by staff. Second.
Motion is, motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Takes us to item number eight.
Item number eight is conditional use permit review sixteen-thirty-one for a bird education and health facility by Black Hills Raptor Center. The reason we pulled it is the ending staff report was different than the agenda, which has been posted prior, and the agenda recommends fourteen conditions. Staff is recommending now to be continued until December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, with the applicant's concurrence.
Any questions for PJ? All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to, what was your recommendation to?
Continue.
To continue the conditional use permit to December, of the review of the conditional use permit sixteen-thirty-one to December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, planning commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to continue with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to fifteen.
Item fifteen is minor plat seventeen-thirty-four to combine three lots to create lot one and two of Wicksville Edition. This is the same situation. Agenda goes out prior to the staff report being filed. The agenda shows approval with twelve conditions. We actually ended up with ten, so therefore staff would recommend approval of layout plat seventeen-twelve with ten conditions.
Any questions for PJ? Anybody in the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for staff recommendation approval.
I recommend approval of layout plat PL seventeen-twelve with ten conditions.
Motion is?
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item sixteen. Seventeen. I had it marked, I just wrote the wrong number.
Frank Oasis, Planner Two. This item is a layout plat to combine two lots in the Burns Placer MS six-nine-seven to create one new lot as of section four-hundred-point-one county subdivision regulations. Existing on one lot is a single-family residence, a detached garage, and the other lot also has a shop or pole barn, not indicated in that aerial photo, but upon review of conditional use permit sixteen-twenty, it appeared it could potentially be within the setback between the two lots. Both lots are owned by the applicant, and upon discussing that setback issue with him, he was interested in combining the two lots. There is a special flood hazard area along the creek, close to the road, no structures within it. No issues with combining these two lots, they're both same zoning, surrounded by similar zoning, low-density residential, and limited ag around it, or general ag.
All right, any questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience with the agent or applicant like to speak on this item?
They're not present here today.
They're not present, okay. If there's no further questions, I would, nothing else for us to know, right?
No, no, no issues found through the staff.
I say, I kind of vaguely remember this one, this is that one where they, where they were having some issues with the setback for that, for that pole barn, right?
Yeah.
And so this, this will get rid of any of those?
Yeah, so that conditional use permit review has been continued to allow this process to go forward, so if this, so if these lots are combined, then the conditional use permit would be ended.
Would be ended, okay. All right, any questions? Seeing none, a motion, or the recommendation is to approve layout plat PL seventeen-thirty-one with the following fourteen condi, uh, that's the wrong one. No, that is the right one.
Yeah, fourteen conditions.
Fourteen conditions. Is there a motion? There's a motion, Bill?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item eighteen.
Good morning again. Item eighteen is a conditional use permit request CU seventeen-thirty to allow multifamily dwelling in a general agriculture district. As it currently stands today, this lot consists of one-point-seven-seven acres. There is a single-family residence on the lot at this time, an onsite wastewater treatment system, and there is special flood hazard area, which includes floodway on this property. This request is in conjunction with another request, the applicant had submitted a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental earlier this year, and upon site visit by staff, it was shown that the two floors were identical, they had kitchens and baths, so it was considered a multifamily dwelling. So if this request is approved, CU seventeen-thirty, which is the request for the vacation home rental, would have to be re-advertised as a multifamily dwelling vacation home rental. Considerations for a conditional use permit, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, an additional dwelling unit by its very nature will increase density and vehicle volume, the effect upon normal and orderly development improvement surrounding vacant property, there does not appear to be other multifamily dwelling units in the area, however, there does appear, oh, let me see if I can get this up here. There is a large recreational resort to the west of this property, and it is pretty much surrounded by National Forest Service lands, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The only concern here is there is a large amount of the subject property in the special flood hazard area. There is ample room for off-street parking and loading requirements, and the proposed conditional use by its very nature will have limited odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU seventeen-thirty-eight with eight conditions.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Cassie.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So this is for multifamily dwelling, in other words, one on the first floor and one on the second floor?
Correct.
But its use will be a vacation home rental?
The intent of it is to be a vacation home rental.
Vacation home rental, uh-huh.
Yes.
And so, explain to me now, I mean, I know I'm kind of new to the, but explain to me why this has to be kind of a two-step process, or isn't it a two-step process?
It is a two-step process because in a general agricultural district, multifamily dwellings are, require a conditional use permit, and because this has two separate living quarters, two separate entrances, two separate dwelling units, staff had considered it a multifamily dwelling. The original conditional use permit request for the vacation home rental was advertised as a vacation home rental in a single-family residence, which it would have to be re-advertised if this request is approved as a multifamily.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions for staff? Is there any members in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
My name is Lila Dodd, I'm a neighbor to this. I have concerns. We have a very narrow driveway, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. We have a narrow driveway, the pitch of, of the two-lane highway coming over to our driveway, if you're coming from the north, you're turning east into the driveway. The driveway is narrow with an immediate drop-off down to the creek. I don't see any room to widen that driveway. When you're pulling into the drive, because of the pitch of our steep driveway and the pitch of the road, you cannot see if there's oncoming traffic from your driveway. So it would be possible, in my opinion, to get stuck out there on that main drive of the Highway sixteen-three-eight-five because you couldn't get into the drive, and I don't know how to fix that. Until recently, we're the only ones living down there, so, you know, it's a, it's just a narrow rocky little driveway that we take care of, so, those are my concerns.
Okay, any questions for Lila?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you live in the, do you live in the property just north of here?
Where you see theirs outlined, we would be to, I guess, the north of that.
Okay. And, and you said you're the only other resident?
Until recently. Then beyond us, there's one more property in that upper V section, and a family of three has moved in there.
Oh, okay, there's two lots there, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you have a, like a road district, or how do you share the expense of taking care of the access out to the highway?
We don't share it, we just carry it ourselves. And my husband has a, a plow on the front of his truck, you know, he removes the snow that way. We bring in the gravel, we did that a few years ago.
So my next question is, is there an access easement then that, that comes off the highway through your property and then cuts off to their property, or how does that work?
They have easement across our property to get to theirs from that driveway.
All right.
I'd like to, I, I want to make sure I understand, so your concern on, on the driveway is the potential, the risk of accidents, or is it because it's the configuration, I, I thought you said they could get stuck? So what, what is the?
Right. More volume of cars coming and going in that vicinity down the driveway, which, you know, if it becomes multifamily, then, you know, you're increasing the amount of traffic on that little driveway of ours. And when you turn in- And when you turn into that drive, you can't see if someone's coming up the drive at the same time. And so, until you are in the driveway yourself, and there's no place to get off to the side, you know, you could end up being stuck out there.
Kind of impasse, two cars coming and no place for them to go, or?
If you had to stop, you could actually, and there's a traffic light right there at two forty-four, three eighty-five, you know. So, you know, there's a volume of traffic because that's the back way up to Mount Rushmore.
Yes.
And my concern is, you know, getting stuck out there.
Since you're the only one that's been living, well, primarily out there in that area, and this is coming out here now, have you talked to them about road maintenance as well, since there's no road district or anything of that nature?
It's never come up, it's never been a concern. You know, as far as taking care of that, we were, you know, we were doing just what we always did, taking care of that. And they, the Johnsons have not been there regularly, you know, I don't think that, that was their plan to, to be there right now on a regular basis. If it becomes multifamily, then I'm wondering jeepers, you know, what's going to happen now.
So when you found out about this and you got the notice, did you reach out to them to see if they wanted to talk about how to maintain that road or make it a little safer, since they're going to have more traffic on it?
No, we didn't, and, and like I said, I don't know how you could make it safe for entering that drive, really. The only thing I can think of is to widen the drive, well, that would be very expensive. You're either going to have to remove the hill on one side, or fill in, you know, that drop-off down to the creek on the other.
Okay, any further questions for Lila? All right, thank you very much, ma'am. Any other audience members like to speak on this item? PJ, I have a couple of questions. So, I'm looking back through here, I don't see anything from the, I mean, do we even, what did the highway say? I'm just trying to find it real fast. Was the highway concerned about it whenever you sent out your request for the highway department, they had no comments?
Look in page five, highway department has no comments since the adjacent roads are state highways and drainage shouldn't be affected if they stay out of the floodplain. That was highway's comment.
And so they weren't worried about any increase in traffic going on and out of that road?
They didn't state it, but I also don't know if that's what they look at. So there's two people in highway that look at these, one who looks at approaches, and another is a kind of more drainage engineer, but he also looks at it from an engineering standpoint, I don't know if they look at it from the point of view, what you're saying, as far as traffic volume.
Okay, versus, okay, I got what you're saying. Any questions for PJ?
Yeah, is this something that, I mean, it sounds like a, really a legitimate issue, could, that could be, we could be creating out there with the additional traffic and, and such, is that, is there a, will there be an opportunity in step two, which is the conditional use permit for the vacation home rental? Would there be an opportunity to, to take a look at that and just see if something, you know, can be done to kind of minimize the, you know, the risk of a problem?
It can be, definitely, it could also, this could also be continued and then looked at for this one. So you're not approving one and then waiting for another, so.
That's what I was gonna, in my discussion, I was gonna say I, I would be interested in continuing is to engage with the applicant, to have them look at that, and maybe even the Department of Transportation, have them take a look at it, see if there's even a, a concern from their perspective of things with the volume of, flow of traffic and the way that, that access point to the highway is. I mean, that's kind of what I was leaning towards after hearing that, just to verify.
So for DOT comments, is that kind of what you're looking for?
From my perspective, I don't know how everyone else thinks on that one. Go ahead, Lloyd, you look like you have a question?
Well, you know, I struggle sometimes when I hear these vacation home rentals and, and I hear increased traffic and so forth. I think sometimes we give perceptions that, that's going to happen, you know, I mean, there are people that purchase homes, just stay in them for certain parts of the year and then kind of rent them out, so it's actually less traffic sometimes, not increased traffic. So that's where I kind of struggle. You know, I know Lila's talked about, you know, she was the only one out there for quite a while, but there's another one past her now, and is there going to be more? But that, Lila, that's what I struggle with, I, I, sometimes I want, I don't know the whole story, and so sometimes it's less traffic, but it's not the same people all the time. I, I understand your concern with the road conditions, so, but I would highly recommend that you get with the property owners and find, figure out a maintenance program for it. That's all, I, I just sort of statement.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Or PJ, or, if not, I would entertain a motion, like I said, I would be interested to at least get some further information on it just to make sure it's not a hazard for, for that specific area, since there's a light and everything in the area, but I'm not sure, I mean, if people are already driving it, they've been driving it, you're only going to have a few cars here and there, it's not like there's a, an entire amusement park back in that area. I do think it's something for the, the landowners to discuss, if there's going to be increase in traffic, how they can work to maintain that road and fix the road appropriately. But that's just my comments on it before. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the condition use permit CU seventeen thirty-eight with the eight conditions.
So the motion's to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If you are going to motion to continue, or to approve, I'm sorry, we'd like to add an additional condition at this time. And that condition be that the conditions of conditional use permit seventeen thirty be followed at all times when we get to that point. One of the conditions that we're going to add is that only one of the living quarters be used for vacation home rental, not both. That will be a condition we'll add to the vacation home rental if we get to that point.
Well, basically, until they come with the other one that's the multi-dwelling one, is that what you're saying?
That they can't rent both.
Right, at this point in time.
Correct, but that'll be part of conditional use permit, but we want to address seventeen thirty in this one, if you're going to approve it.
Does that make sense, Bill?
Yeah, that's, yeah, definitely.
Okay, and a second, or is, is okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the altered addition in the recommendations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to nineteen.
Item nineteen is layout plat seventeen thirty-five to reconfigure lot lines in order to create tracks thirty revised A, track thirty-two revised A, and track forty revised A of Rushmore Ranch Estates. And I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint here. One of the applicants is Tom and Ann Slaughter, also other landowners, last name is Neff Bernhard and Jukler, excuse me if I didn't get that right. There is a new landowner involved, but that was not part of the original application process, but we have since received a signed application from a new landowner of the properties. Essentially, what the applicant is doing is looking to decrease density by one lot by combining four lots into three, and the subject properties are located in a planned unit development seventeen oh eight, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on October third, two thousand and seventeen, with twelve conditions. Let's see if we can get to, there we go. It's a little messy. The, what you're looking at are the proposed lots as recommended. And on existing track thirty, there is a single-family residence built with approved building permits and an operating, current operating permit, and a detached garage built with a building permit. We'll go to this one, it's a little bit more dr- drabble, but it kind of talks, shows you more what we're looking at. Track thirty-two revised has a single-family residence, again, with the, an approved building permit and a current operating permit, and a detached garage with a, with a building permit. Track thirty-nine, which is a small track there, pretty much in the middle, is vacant of any structures. Track, track forty revised has a single-family residence, again, with building permits and an operating permit and detached garage with a building permit. It also has a twenty-foot wide access and water line easement to the water tank tract, a little square in the northwest corner, or in the north corner, northwest on the page here, but north of the property line. And that would be fourteen point five nine acres. The proposed tracks would pretty much be the same, the ones that are pictured on the screen at this time. They would all increase in size, track A would be twenty-two point seven four acres. I'm sorry, track thirty revised A, track thirty-two revised A would increase to ten point eight nine acres. Track forty revised A would increase to seventeen point six two acres. And track thirty-nine, the smallest of them all, would actually be eliminated and absorbed into two other track, proposed tracks. This was routed through interdepartmental review. County Equalization Office had recommended that on future plats, some of the dotted lines actually be labeled, so we know what they are, and also show what the old lot lines are, because they're really indistinguishable at this point. There's also a line that comes down right here that isn't labeled, and we're not sure what it is, but it can either be eliminated or labeled if it needs to be. County Highway had mentioned that the layout plat that was submitted by the surveyor indicates that the zoning is a PUD through Lawrence County, it's through Pennington County, so that would be something they have to change. That the corners be set not to shown for the, that the corners are not shown for the proposed lot lines between track thirty-two revised A and track forty revised A, and that the lots are in sections, are not in section seventeen, yet they refer to section seventeen, they're in section seven, there's a couple in the legal description that refer to seventeen. And that the garage on track thirty-two revised A appears to be too close to the section line, that would be this one right here, that little circle underneath the fifty-five, it appears maybe to encro- encroach into the section line, the thirty-three itself, and also into the twenty, the twenty-five foot setback of a section line. So these are things they would have to address with the further, with further plating. Number seven, that was a mistake in the staff report, so you can just ignore that portion. Registered deeds has some concerns about the proposed lot, the tract names, and I'll just read what she had written. Proposed tract legal description should be track thirty revised two, track thirty-two revised two, and track forty revised two of Rushmore Ranch Estates subdivision. If the developer uses thirty revised A for the new legal, the legal would show up in their system as track thirty R E V A, Riva, which apparently would make it very confusing to find. So he just recommends instead of revised A, just change it to a two. The applicant's request will decrease density in Rushmore Ranch Estates in planned unit development seventeen oh eight, and one of the conditions the applicant will have to do is to do a major amendment to that planned unit development. But for the purposes of layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request, and staff recommends approval of layout plat seventeen thirty-five with fourteen conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, would anybody in the audience like to speak on this item, the applicant or agent first?
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, Frank Tachesere with Arla Land Surveying. One question for clarification, and I think Mr. Conover already clarified it. Staff recommendation one about the garage, I believe, it's written in the report as track thirty revised, I believe you meant track thirty-two?
Correct.
Okay. And the amendment to the PUD, since there was no details in the report I received, I assumed that that was just a matter of getting the legal description revised, but Mr. Conover, you recommended that there's something detailed in there, is there, where can we get that information?
Yeah, the PUDs are done by legal descriptions for the lots, and if the legal descriptions are changing, then that would be the update or the amendment to the current planned unit development.
That's the only update that's necessary, then?
That we know of at this time.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Frank? I guess, no questions? Okay, thank you, Frank.
All right.
Any other member of the audience like to speak on this item? Oh, any further questions from the commission? Seeing none, I would entertain, let's see, the recommendation, the staff recommends approval of layout plat PL seventeen thirty-five with the following fourteen conditions. I'd entertain a motion.
A move to approve layout plat PL seventeen dash thirty-five with fourteen conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, PJ?
With the change to condition one to thirty-two.
Yes, I was gonna...
Condition number one is track thirty-two.
Revised. Not track thirty, just a typo.
All right, amend my motion accordingly to, from track thirty to track thirty-two revised.
That's fine.
Okay, a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. That takes us to item twenty.
Item twenty is conditional use permit amendment oh four thirty-five to amend an existing conditional use permit to allow for thirteen storage units in lieu of the approved ten storage units, and to allow the owner to, oh, and allow the, the storage units to be larger than the approved thirty-foot by a hundred and fifty-foot storage units, also to allow a single-family residence to be used as caretaker's residence on the subject property, and to allow an office and shop to be built. Staff report indicates that this is a highway service district, it's actually a general commercial district, and that was an oversight on our part in the, on the first page. This plan, this conditional use permit has been before the planning commission since two thousand and four. It is never, no work has ever been done on the, on putting the storage units up. It has been approved several times by the planning commission since two thousand and four. And in two thousand and ten, when Mr. Thurbridge, the current landowner had, and landowner at the time, had come up to, for an, for an additional extension, the planning commission had requested that, at the time that the storage units were going to be built, that the, that the landowner had to notify the landowners by, by mail and have the conditional use permit reviewed. So we're doing that at this time, there is a new landowner, a possible new landowner that Mr. Thurbridge is working with. What the original conditional use permit was approved for was only ten storage units, and what the new landowner is asking for is thirteen storage units, and also to have a single-family residence on the property, used as a caretaker residence and an office in the southeast corner. We don't believe, I don't know this for a fact, but I don't believe that Mr. Thurbridge was looking to put a single-family residence up with the original ten, as he lives just directly across the street to the east. So what the new landowner, or the proposed new landowner had to do was to send out letters to all the neighboring landowners within five hundred feet and let them know of the proposal. That has been done, staff had not received any letters of complaint or concern. There was one phone call this morning about this item, but just wanted to know approximately when it would be on the agenda and around what time. Unknown who the caller was or what their position was on this. On July twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, during a planning commission meeting, and after in two thousand and sixteen, staff had noticed that this was becoming a, a repeated conditional use permit, and we wanted, we had, planning commission at that time was looking to end conditional use permits that have gone on for years and years and years, the applicant's request and approved. So at the last review in two thousand and sixteen, staff had asked to put a condition in that said if things weren't done by a certain time, that this conditional use permit would end. Since that time, though, the applicant has, he had said that he has a buyer, and from, we have actually met with the proposed buyer and his family, and have been talking about this for some time. They did meet the conditions that they were required to do as far as mailing and notifying the, the planning director of, of the possible transfer in the property name, and also what their proposed additions are going to be for the, for the property. Again, this has been approved for many years with ten storage units, and you'll find in staff, in staff's recommendations is that we're only approving ten at this time, not to be over seventy-five hundred square feet, and that upon, and the applicant was using, looking to do this in phases over the years. So this is going to be appro, this is going to be reviewed again anyway, and so we can kind of see how, if this gets approved, how the, how the construction of any storage units are, if there's any problems with them, and then the planning commission through those reviews could allow up to the thirteen. Mr. Chris Peterson is the proposed landowner, he applied and submitted for the conditional use permit as required. Just to reemphasize everything, the request is to allow thirteen storage units to be built in three phases, all larger than square footage that was previously approved, that they have eight parking spaces. Originally, he was required to have four for ten units, he's proposing eight for thirteen. That he also have a house and shop to be located on the subject property in addition to the requested storage units, that they have the single-family residence that, as far as we know, that his family will live in, located on the subject property. And that he proposes also that all structures will have a four-foot wide sidewalk around their perimeter. This was routed through the interdepartmental review, county highway had some concerns about the section line, which is also the eastern property line, which is an existing road that goes down there, and is, is concerned a little bit about the drainage on the property, and that also that if there is any road construction in that section line, that the applicant received the approved building permit. in that section line, that the applicant receive the approved building permit, or the approved permits as required. Take that out there. County Fire Administration Administrator did not respond to any conditions for this, or with any conditions or comments for this conditional use permit. So staff put in a condition that if any building permits are applied for, that it'd also be routed through to fire, to the fire administrator prior to approval. I know one concern that had come up previously with other storage units over the years is the distance between the storage units, so that vehicles can get in and out and around on the properties. County Ordinance Officer indicated, didn't indicate any objection, and just that any junk and debris on the subject property be cleared prior to the issuance of any building permits. The county addressing coordinator just wanted to make sure that there was going to be separate addresses for the storage units, well, for the single-family residence and the office, and that each storage unit be individually numbered. Also, if they're looking to do the single-family residence in the phase that they indicated, it's going to make the number of residents on that road five or greater, because we also know that Mr. Thurgood is looking to subdivide a property to the south. So with the increase in the number of residential units, they'd have to pursue getting that roadway named. Currently, it is not named. 911 echoed the concerns of the addressing coordinator. Rapid City Public Works said that they did not object to the previously approved conditional use permit, and just would suggest that stipulation number five be amended to limit the number and size of future storage units, or that a major amendment be required prior to the approval, kind of what we're doing anyway. So just wanted it reviewed before they went over 10. Rapid City Planning Department just wanted to make sure that Highway 44, which is a principal arterial, that the addition of these storage units and the turning on and off of Highway 44 would still allow Highway 44 to be used as the principal arterial, excuse me. And South Dakota Department of Transportation was questioned on this conditional use permit, and they came back with that they had no comment. The comments they have had in the past is there are two additional, there are two existing approaches on the subject property, one here and one here. Previous comments from them, this was during the request to put a telecommunication tower up there that had, that had gone on for eight years. DOT consistently said that they would not allow those, that they would, they would have to investigate whether those two existing accesses could continually be used. They would not allow any further ones. With the, with this current application submitted by the applicant, doesn't appear that he's looking to utilize those existing approaches at this time. Staff has not received, at the time of the staff report, staff had not received any phone calls nor any letters in opposition of the applicant's request until this morning. There was just one phone call, again, like I had said, about when it was going to appear on the agenda. Staff is further recommending the approval, again, of 10 storage units at this, at this time, and would address the additional three requested with future reviews of the conditional use permit. I believe also that the very last condition, number 19, has a review in two years. I would like to change that actually to a one-year review, and therefore, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit 0435 with 19 conditions, with the amendment to number 19 and a review in one year.
All right. Any questions for PJ? Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, PJ. One is on condition six, is it important to specify the size of those three that will be allowed, that'll be, that can be applied for in the future? Like, for example, in, in, in condition five, it says not to exceed 7,500 square feet in area, each of them.
Yeah. Staff is just trying to honor the original conditional use permit as much as possible, which only allowed 10 units no larger than 30 by 150. All the units that are proposed are larger than that at this time, in all, in all the phases. And the final phase, phase three for storage buildings, doesn't have a size listed. It has to be determined, which is...
Say this again, that the, that the 10, the 10 that I propose now, the proposed size is greater...
The 10 that are proposed by the applicant are greater than what was originally approved. Staff is recommending that they not be larger than 7,500 square feet.
Which is what they're, what they, which, which is what they've proposed.
Which is, I believe, what their smallest one is, in number four, I'm trying to find it.
So to comply with this, the size of the others would have to be reduced to fit the 7,500 square foot?
That's what we're recommending, that they not be bigger than 7,500.
Yes, okay. And so these, the next, if they get to the point where they're going to apply for, to build three more, then you're comfortable that the sizes can be determined at that time?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And, and conversations with the proposed landowner, from my understanding, is the request for them to be bigger is more of just because of how they're sold, is that the original approval size didn't quite fit in as far as the proper size to do a storage unit. Now, it could be, that was a long time ago, we met, and things may have changed, but that was the reasoning.
Okay. Then I also have a question on nine, condition nine, about the signs. So right now, there aren't signs, or are there?
Last time I was out there, there was just a for sale sign. I can't remember if there was a billboard down there, but I don't believe it's on that property. There's a for sale sign on, or it could be a sold sign now in the northeast corner.
Yeah, okay. But so, but these would be more like billboard-type signs that they're talking about in, in condition nine?
No, they could be advertising signs for the property itself, and kind of a name of the company.
I see.
Something like that.
Okay. So do they, do these kind of signs, do they need to comply with 1,500-feet spacing?
If it's for on- and off-premise signs, you mean, yes, they would. They would still be under the same ordinance.
Uh huh.
Yes.
So if this, see, when I look, and I don't have the exact dimension here, but if I look at this map, one map, it looks to me like where it's got a kind of a measure on the bottom, it's roughly 1,500, a little less than 1,500 feet from, from, from east to west. So how can two signs fit on there?
They can request it. A lot of times with, with storage units, they have a sign for the business, and then they'll put another one up to showing, who knows what. It could be another one for the business on a different end of the property. It could be a billboard. I mean, they have that opportunity to do that. Just, it was two because of what has been done in the past with storage units. So they still have the right to ask. There still is procedures that they can ask. There's no guarantee they'll get approved, but they have the right to ask.
But they don't, there's not a requirement for another conditional use permit to, to allow these signs? It's just simply getting the, the sign permit?
No, ma'am. They'd have to meet the requirements in Section 312, and if they go into a portion of the section that requires a conditional use permit, then they'd have to get a conditional use permit. It's not just a guarantee they're going to get it with a sign permit.
Which, which having the spacing less than 1,500 feet then would require the conditional use permit?
If it's lit or an off-premise sign.
Lit or off.
It's most likely, in other issues like this, it's an on-premise sign, so it's advertising what's there. Wouldn't have to meet that unless it, wouldn't have to meet the 1,500-feet requirement unless it's lit.
I see.
This, that condition also states that they can do two signs, not three, not four, not five, that we're recommending it stay at two, and then they'd still have to meet the condition of Section 312.
All right.
Well?
Yep.
Any further questions for PJ? Go ahead, Laura.
PJ, I kind of struggle. I read through the city's future land use, and they, they recommend that, and if it, it's, they identify it as conservation natural, for natural beauty and so forth. If this was approved during the building permit process, how can we control colors that's in our, do we have that process to be able to set forth some controls for the colors and, and landscape of the property to keep it looking natural for...
We do have some conditions about natural colors. We also have in the, in this ordinance with screening, it can either be natural screening or a fence. This kind of runs into a similar problem we had with another property where the highway was higher than the property, no matter what screening you put up there, you're still going to see over it. It can be done, but we don't have building codes, traditional building codes or building inspectors as, say, the city does.
Yeah. That's just something, if this goes forward, that I'd, I'd like to see more of. You know, if we're doing these rural areas to be able to keep, so we don't have some bright yellow thing.
Yeah. And I didn't look around to see if the applicant was in the audience, but if he is here, or an agent, maybe he can address what colors he's looking at.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant or the agent in the audience?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to speak on this item?
Sure.
Good morning.
To answer your questions on the color, yes.
Sir, can you go ahead and say your name?
Oh, sorry, Chris Peterson.
Thank you.
The colors of the storage units, yes. We want to take that in consideration and make it blend with the environment and beautiful. The, the name that I've come up with for these storage units is Big Game Storage, and I am a blacksmith, grew up in a blacksmith shop, and we're going to do some wildlife scenes. So deer, elk, that's the kind of, it's, it's a storage, but it's a, there's a big need for the boats, campers, and to have those enclosed. That's why the different sizes of the buildings, because at this point, this is new to me, but there's a lot of different sizes out there. And that's why I wanted to do it in phases, but, and I have two young boys, and want to have them grow up in a business atmosphere to taking care of yards, taking care of the storage units, things of that sort.
Okay. Any further questions? Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question regarding the signs again. So I understand, you know, clearly that you need a sign, on-premise sign for the, you know, the name of the business and so on. What's your intent for the, for the, if you were going to do a second sign, what would be your intent?
What I was understanding is that when you do a sign, I would like to do a sign for front and back. So whether the traffic's traveling to the west or to the east, they're going to see it on each side. So I'm understanding that's two. That would be, that would be one sign. Okay?
Yeah. If they're back-to-back, it'd be a two-phase sign. If they're on a V, they'd be a V-shaped sign, but they'd still be one, if it's on one structure.
Okay. And to answer your question, where that arrow is in the property line, up to the top left, there is already a billboard there that George is getting, Joe is getting Brent for.
Okay. I thought there was one up there. I thought, I thought it was a little bit further west than that.
85. Yep. And he currently has a permit for that, and I'll be taking that over. And then it shows right, number 11, where I would be putting the other sign.
Do, yeah, could you show us?
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. Number 11.
So that's a billboard there?
Oh, yeah, it is right down there.
That would be where I'd like the new one, because that's going to promote the storage units.
So that's approximately... About there?
Yes.
And, and so you say there is an existing billboard?
Oh, yeah, there is. Right, probably that right there. DOT billboard, looks like.
Uh huh. And, and so that billboard, that's not going to be, that wouldn't be counted in the two that are allowed under, under recommendation nine?
No, ma'am.
Or condition nine?
No, ma'am.
So really, you don't have any plans to do a second sign?
At this point, no. But this is new to me, so...
Right. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Then all your questions? All right. Any further questions?
I just got one comment.
Go ahead.
Thanks for sharing that with me, because that kind of helps in the decision. You're going to do some metal art, you said, some like laser cut, cutouts and...
Yes, the fence going around this, what I would like to do is, yes, big, not big, but about this big of elk inside of my steel fence that's going to be surrounding this. We're going to do a custom fence around this place and make it look...
And Mr. Peterson, possibly for Kathy's benefit, your sign would probably be made out of something similar?
That would more likely be the telephone poles, the flat, but with, you know, like, some, similar to a billboard, yes. That sign would be. Because that's what's currently on there right now.
Okay. You're going to use what's currently available, right?
Pardon?
Current, you're going to use what's currently available right now.
Number 11 is where I would want to build a new one, and with the existing one, I would just leave that the way it is right now.
By the existing one, you mean the billboard that you showed us where it is? Is, or is there another one that's existing?
No, there's just the one.
But the, did I understand it correctly? I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No.
But I guess here's what I'm, so there's the billboard that's existing, and then in addition to that, condition nine allows two more on, two on-premise signs. So if, if there's two here, plus the billboard, there'd be three.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
But these are...
But I also believe that billboard exists off your property, off the property, doesn't it? In DOT right of way? According to, okay.
So that billboard sign is on his property?
Without a surveyor, I don't see it shown on this from ACES.
So then the question is, does number nine to be, need to be reworded if it's going to have... clarifying.
The applicant's saying, I think what we're, what you're getting at is it'd be okay to change the wording for number nine to allow at this time one on-premise sign, with the understanding that every applicant has the opportunity to amend that in the future.
I guess that's what I was kind of getting at for what Kathy was asking, so...
And I get to keep the current one.
The billboard stays, and this would be one additional on-premise sign to advertise for the property. Does that make sense?
That's exactly.
That's what you were going for.
That's the solution, yes.
Okay. Everybody got that one? So we'll adjust that in the recommendation. All right. Any further questions for the applicant? All right. I have no further questions for you. Just want to see if anybody else wants to comment. Anybody else like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name's Eric Swanson. I own the property directly to the south, so it would be the southwest corner, basically over to where the house is, is proposed, and I have an interest in the property to the west where it says Drainage Basin A. I'm neither for nor against this at this time. I just have some concerns that I'd like to, to be addressed, and I didn't get a copy of the, all the conditions, but this is going to be the first commercial property that's going to be developed between Johnson Siting and, say, where Blessed Sacrament Church is. So it's going to significantly change that area up there, and the concerns that I have are a few of them, but where the storage units are going to go, basically, it's a, this is a 20-acre site, give or take, and you can see that he's going to develop half of it, and the half that's developed into the storage units, I'm not certain how the surface is going to be treated. So is it going to be a gravel parking lot? Is it going to be an asphalt parking lot? And with those, you can see the arrows that are proposed drainage sites through the units. All that drainage goes towards the west, which is listed as Drainage Basin A. And currently, that has been a stock dam. So there's currently a stock dam right about, and I can't, where it says Drainage Basin A, if you look, there's like a red dot there.
Does that help you?
Yeah.
And then you can use this pointer to draw.
So you can see this is a, this is a stock dam. That's the inside. And when that property was owned by Joe, Joe used this multiple times when the city built the Clegghorn School Water Treatment Facility. They hauled all the waste rock and waste dirt up there, and that's what all this fill material here is. So it's just dirt, fill material that's padded in there. So my concern is, if we have drainage issues with all the drainage going to the west there into the Drainage Basin A, then you can see all the trees that are to the south. This is the drainage area. There's a very steep, narrow gully that goes directly into my property, and my concern is I want to know how that water's going to be treated if it's all asphalt parking lot with the increased traffic, you know, you got oil and et cetera, et cetera, from people's cars, all that sort of thing. What's going to happen with the drainage water? If it's just going to be left as a stock dam and then goes directly into the, to the ground? Remember, this is the area up there above the Madison Aquifer that they're having... Remember, this is the area up there above the Madison Aquifer that they're having lots and lots of concern with the wastewater treatment up there. So second of all, kind of on that same line with the wastewater treatment, if he's going to have a shop proposed...
Can we go back to that diagram?
So we have a shop proposed on the southeast corner, and then we have a house proposed, which was never, this was a commercial property. Do each of those have a septic? If it's a shop property for the commercial area, the southeast corner, you know, is going to be servicing the public, what's the septic issues with those? According to a current planning, I believe that area is limited to one septic per 20 acres, or excuse me, one septic per 10 acres, and this looks like it's going to have two on 10 acres unless we're going to limit and not put another septic on the west side. That's exactly how it's been treated in the past.
Push the arrow again. Sorry? Arrow for the, that previous slide that you had.
So in this area over here, this is an existing house, it used to be called the Ward's, now it's the Crawford's. This was a 10-acre plot, and then farther down the road this way, Joe Radigan has a home. He purchased both properties, and then initially what he did is you guys approved him to cut this off into three acres, so this home's on like three acres, I believe, and then the remaining seven acres was put on the 10 acres below. So one house is on 17 acres, one house on three acres, so it still matches the septic, one house per 10 acres. Lighting, again, we're taking a commercial property or a, area that has no commercial property, and then we're putting up 10 acres of storage units. My concern is how's he going to light these? I assume he's going to have security lighting. That's going to be, if it, if every building up there, and he's got 13 of them proposed, has lights on all four sides, like a security lighting, which is what I assume a, a storage facility's going to be, I mean, we're talking about 50 lights beaming out into the middle of the rural property up there. The only lights that are currently, in that method, is the fire station, which is right here across the street. There's a few security lights on that, and that can be seen for a long distance. I mean, it's, there's a purpose for the security lighting on the fire department, I understand that, but my concern is that huge volume of light pollution unless there's a proposed way to minimize that. We have 10 acres of lighting surface up there. I was also going to bring up the signage issue. My concern, again, is he going to put up an LED big beaming sign, but I guess that's been covered today. I mean, it sounds like he's just going to be using a billboard-type sign. Like I said, I'm neither for nor against this at this time unless I, until I find out how the, these issues I have are, are going to be addressed.
Any questions for Eric? All right, thank you, sir. Any other item, any other individuals in the public like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Are there any further questions or further discussion? PJ, would you like to address any, any items?
Sure. What the previous speaker mentioned are some of the concerns and things that staff noticed as well, and they are addressed in the conditions. So condition number eight addresses lighting and states that any lighting, and he may not be aware of this, that any lighting used to illuminate off-street parking or on-premise lighting shall be so arranged as to deflect the light away from all adjourning residents. And number 10 addresses drainage, that was a concern of ours, also a concern of the highway department, and states that prior to, to a building permit being issued for the first storage unit, a drainage plan addressing runoff shall be reviewed and approved by the county highway department, they have the drainage engineer, and also our department. So they are, we are looking at that as well, it was something that we noticed.
And then do we know anything about, is it going to be septic, or is it going to be...
Well, most likely he's looking to do a septic for the house. We don't know how many bedrooms, we haven't seen a floor plan. We would think that if he has the office, it's probably, you know, for the public, he's probably going to have a restroom in there. It is possible that that be connected to the other septic system. Septics are sized on the number of bedrooms, not the number of bathrooms. It could be a simple gray water if there's no bathroom in there and just kind of a sink, but we haven't seen any of the plans for either of those at this time.
Go ahead, Kathy.
PJ, regarding the drainage situation and, and condition 10, now, I don't, I may not understand this correctly, but it strikes me that the highway department, when they review for drainage, they're really referring to getting drainage, you know, underneath highways and not getting water to pool in the ditches along it and so on. Would this, would this review that's going to be required by the county highway department and, and the planning, would it take into consideration the drainage onto the neighboring property? Like, for example, the situation he pointed out, that the drainage from that...
Correct. When this is fir, correct. When this is first routed out to all the different departments, they kind of give it a cursory review, but be, prior to the approval of a building permit, the, for the first storage unit, it would be a very targeted look at, okay, here's the concerns, because it does look like there is, looks like most of it kind of drains kind of this way, and kind of goes this direction. Yeah. So it would definitely be looked at.
So that would be okay?
Yes.
Any further questions, comments?
Just a comment where if the dam was filled up with excavated material from the water treatment plant, one of the notes in the plan from ACES indicates that there's plenty of volume in the storage, so just a detail that needs to be confirmed later, whether the storage exists or not.
These notes?
Yeah, it's in item six, in the drainage notes.
All right, any further questions? Currently, the recommendations for staff approval, the conditional use permit, CU 0435 with 19 conditions, we've done a couple edits to, to item number nine, no more than one on-premise sign shall be allowed in accordance with section 312, and item number 19, the conditional use permit to be reviewed in one year rather than the two years that's drafted there. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Laurie.
Yeah, there was also some, I guess, question about surfacing. On the drainage plan, it says that the surfacing is going to be asphalt millings. It's note number two on the first page. But I think...
Can I visit with you about that?
Yeah, sure.
What I need to do is start with gravel. You have to have a base. And I know there's definitely a concern with dust, and my boys and my wife and I will be living on this property, of course, we don't want dust all over our, our property and our vehicles and the storage units, so that is a concern of mine also, but you've got to get a base, and what I'm understanding is that the gravel will soak in a lot of water, where the asphalt, you are going to have that, that runoff. And I'm going to be living on this property, I, that is a big concern of mine, that's why that dam, I've been told, is dry 95% of the time, where if we get this water and to go to that dam, and I dig it out more, it's going to be wildlife, we love wildlife, so it's going to be water for the deer and the turkeys, but I want to control that runoff. And that's why we're going to build the road, the county road, and put a culvert in there, but you can see only one acre of that property, of that land over there is, is going to the east under that culvert. But gravel is my main road source right now, and can eventually get to that asphalt, making sure that we've got the water under control.
So are you saying then that you may not, you may not install asphalt surfacing?
I would like to, especially in the parking lot, of course, because that's where people are getting in and out, coming into my office. And maybe around the storage units, but not in, not everywhere, I guess.
Oh, okay.
So that, we can get some of that surface water to go into the ground.
Okay.
Not have such a runoff.
Okay, so what you're saying is that your plans are just to surface the, the roads where people travel on the property?
The main travel areas.
Okay. Thank you.
And to answer the septic question, yes, I was planning to do two septic tanks. For each, because yes, I'm going to have an office, so I'm going to have customers coming in there. At this point. Uh, that's, I think that's it. Thanks.
All right, any further clarifications? So, recommended by staff to approve, we made those adjustments to nine and 19.
Excuse me, I have one more. The lighting. There is so much light, and I understand your, your question and your concerns, which is, we, my wife and I actually camped on this property to see this summer, not, I just have a camper, and stayed there just to see the traffic, see if we liked it, and sure enough, across the street is the, a fire station, and it gives off a lot of light. This property does not need lighting because of that. Motion lights is what I like. So the storage units are only going to be open from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, so nobody has access in the dark. I don't want lights going off, I don't want people in there. There will be a security gate, there'll be a security gate going into our house. But motion lights are, are very nice, because then when someone needs that light, they come on, but they would be small motion lights. They would not be, I would not be lighting up the, the place like a Christmas tree, because yes, it's...
Okay. Thank you. All right, so recommendation, staff recommends approval, I would entertain a motion.
Hold on, approval for conditional use permit amendment CU 0435 with the 19 conditions as modified on number nine and 19, where two has been replaced by one on both cases.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item 21.
Item 21 is Plan Unit Development 1603 from Dan and Nancy Evangelistos, and there's several other owners as well. Received a phone call from Nancy Evangelisto a little while ago, about a week or so ago, and their Plan Unit Development was set for review by condition in February 2018. They're requesting that the review of the Plan Unit Development be moved up earlier than that, so that it goes before the Planning Commission and the board, so it's pretty much done before mid-December. The reason we're coming for you before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the board is because there is a specific, two specific conditions that state it's a February review. So we're asking for a recommendation on the amendment or the request from the applicants.
Anybody have any initial questions for PJ?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Interrupt. Go ahead, Sonny.
PJ, there's a reference here on the complaints to the lights. Can you explain what lights those are? I didn't see any detail about that.
So, let's see if I can find an old PowerPoint here for you. So on this, in this, don't have one, in this Plan Unit Development, there's a lot of vacant lots, but mainly it's the Summer Creek Inn, which is a bed and breakfast, and there's been complaints about the lights being kept on late into the night. That's a consistent concern. Our ordinance officer was out and spoke with Mr. Evangelisto, who said he would have them off by 10:30. Originally, when this Plan Unit Development was approved, it was going to be under, from staff's understanding, there was a noise ordinance, so we later unders, later learned that there wasn't one for the county. So one of the reasons staff is in favor of this earlier review is then we can put in a time restriction for the lights. The applicants had mentioned previously that because they do weddings, they don't always end right at 10 o'clock, and so the light's going to stay on a little bit later for safety concerns. We did also receive another complaint just this morning via email because of an event they had this weekend, because of where some of the cars were parked, and we haven't been able to investigate that again, we just got it this morning. We've received several phone calls since the last review of this PU D, but the lighting complaint and the one this morning are the, are the only two that we've got in writing.
Are those outdoor lights?
They are. They're kind of like decorative lights, like along the frame of the house to kind of accentuate the design.
Okay. Rich, did you have a question?
I was just curious what the reason was to move it up to November from February.
And the applicants aren't here, are they?
The applicants are not here.
Okay. And when you're not here and you're asking us to adjust, I'm of the mindset to continue it until they come here to let us know if we're asking them a question, so we can make a better informed decision. However, I understand, PJ, you said it's beneficial for the staff to review it earlier because adding...
That's what, that's why we don't have a concern about moving it to an earlier date. The reason it was going to be a February, we'll go into the history here, I'm sorry, they have a tent on their, on their property that they use for weddings. It's a large tent, and it, they take it down throughout the winter, but then put it back up. What they're looking to do, though, when this was originally done, is that they wanted a permanent tent permitted on the property. We don't do building permits for permanent tents as they're temporary in nature, so what the Board of Commissioners had, had chosen to do was either that 12 months from when the building permit is approved, or February 2018, whichever comes first, which is in this case, is going to be February 2018, they would look to see if there was any further complaints about the tent and the use of the tent, and then possibly address a permanent building permit for the tent. So that's kind of what spurred the earlier review. It wouldn't have normally been February, it would have been later.
Right.
But they, it was kind of a concession.
Got you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Laurie.
And the light complaints were just related to the lighting on the particular, on the inn, not the lights all around the property? Because I think they have paths and stuff.
One I, the one that I mentioned in here was about the, the bed and breakfast itself,
so the lighting they have on there.
But I haven't, I don't know of any that are for the property. Do you know of any?
If I recall correctly, there, there might have at one point in time been a complaint about some lights they were using around the tent, but I think they've since taken those down. I think at one point in time, they had some lights that were like on the ground that kind of shined up into the tent, if I recall correctly, but I don't think those are there anymore.
Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Do you think there's, they want to get this done before Christmas? Because my understanding is they have a lot of holiday parties and weddings and stuff like that. Don't know?
It'd be nice to have the applicants here, yeah.
Okay.
And that's kind of where I lean as well. I would like to ask those questions, so, you know, if there's something else that's going on, we can find out and, you know. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? I don't see anybody in the audience that's to us here today. But I'm leaning to, I would like to see it continued from my perspective, so we can actually have them here, so we can ask that question, and if it brings other questions forward, we can ask those and get it clarified, why they want to move it up earlier. There are some complaints on the property, so it's, you know, it's one of those things, maybe the, maybe the individuals that have complaints, maybe they're going to be out of town and they're not going to be able to come for the review, I don't know. There's always speculation, but there's not even a recommendation on this. Go ahead, Kathy.
I guess, I guess I'd be inclined to approve moving it up, I mean, I don't know if it causes you any sort of issue. And, and like you said, you don't, you'd be able to maybe address some of these issues.
The benefit, the benefit of doing it outweighs the, the issues it's going to create for us.
That's kind of what I think. So I, I guess I would be in favor of moving it up.
So it's more beneficial for you guys to move it up, then?
It would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know why we need to continue it. I think we could just approve it with the...
That sounds fair. I just want to make sure it wasn't an extra draw if there was some more information that we needed. If you're telling me you think it's more beneficial, then... I can't, I see the look.
I will, um, do you, do you want me to make a, do you move for approval to change the date for review of PU 1603 from February to November 13th, 2017? I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Motion and a second, further discussion?
And we can talk about it now, if you want to.
Any discussion, any questions for PJ? PJ, you kind of look like you wanted to say something.
No, it's all right. Just one note that your recommendation, this is only to move the review up. This recommendation's going to go before the board, and then the actual review will be November 13th.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item 22.
Item 22 is County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from their October 9, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. With the exception of Conditional Use Permit 1736, this item was appealed and will be heard at the November 7th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Is that the one with the cabins? Okay. So I guess it wasn't clear what was moving forward from here, because didn't we ask, didn't we make sure everything was, seemed to be okay between the applicant and the one that had got up here?
Correct.
Okay.
It was our understanding as well.
So something must've, okay. Any questions for PJ on that one?
That was the one that had the multiple cabins on the property, correct?
Right.
That were spread like in the tree line?
Yeah, there were, he was gonna do it in stages, like with four now, and then maybe four later, but wasn't sure. And I thought everything was good, but apparently not, so.
It was located, I believe, right outside of Keystone, is that the one?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, near Keystone.
Keystone, yeah. That's right, okay.
Any further questions? All right, item 23, items from the public. Anyone from the public have anything they'd like to address today? I see no one coming forward. All right, item 20, uh, item 24, items from the staff.
Sure. Item 24, item A, Section 204G Special Animal Keeping Regulations Committee. Just a update that the deadline for people to get in their applications to interview, to be on the committee is October 27th. We have received one application so far, since it's been advertised, it's been known about for a couple weeks, and it was advertised last two weeks in the, in three papers, right? Okay. That's all I have on that, unless there's any questions. Item B, Section 507, Construction Permits and Mining Permits. Just wanted to give the Planning Commission a kind of a heads up, is the updates and amendments for both of, well, it was one ordinance, but now it's going to be proposed as two. They are rather lengthy, they are large in size, so just kind of a heads up that they will be coming before you shortly. Item C, Staff Evaluations, it's getting that time of year, and our, our department does individual staff evaluations every week, every year, and just letting you know that those are coming up. As well as the county does department head evaluations every November, and those are coming up for me as well. So I always like to try to have staff evaluations done prior to that. They don't, it hasn't been any really issues with those, so it's kind of a, we don't, we're not required to do them, but we'd like to have it. And that's all we have at this time, unless there's anything else.
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
Circling back to the appeal for the Conditional Use Permit 1736, if, is that, if, is there, like, for example, if I went on to the, the recorded, the audio of that meeting, the County Commission, Board of Commissioners meeting, is there, is there, do they talk about this, is this some information? Or is it just simply that it was appealed? I mean, if I wanted to find out a little more about the issues that were of concern and appealed, where would I look?
I can probably send you the appeal letter that we received. It wouldn't have gone to the county board until the appeal, because you guys would've been the final decision since it was a conditional use permit. But I can certainly send you the letter.
So it hasn't been before the board yet, because right now it's still with your office through that appeal letter?
Yep. Yep. It'll, the first time the county board will hear it will be November 7th.
And I think I received that in email too, and if I remember correctly, it's still about those, the eight total numbered cabins, is that what he was appealing, if I remember?
Yeah. It still circles around the number of cabins, and then also the road. It's my understanding that they haven't been able to reach any sort of agreement on the road situation, because the, the Shields who are requesting the recreational resort weren't comfortable with what the neighbor brought forward in terms of a maintenance agreement. So they were reluctant to, to sign it.
Okay.
Was there, was there immediate neighbor that was the, that appealed the decision?
Yes.
Right.
Yep, yep.
So is, do you think it's more the cabins, or do you think it's more the road issue?
Um, I think it's a combination of both. I, I kind of get the feeling that if it were to go down to four cabins, maybe the road issue would kind of dissipate a little bit. But I think ultimately, it's the number of cabins mixed with the road.
All right. Any further questions? Item 26, items from the membership. Anybody have anything?
Yes.
Nope. Then, that was item 25, actually, item 26 is adjournment. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.